Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 6th meeting of the Pipe Park Planning Board. Please take note of the change in the exits around the room. They're not going to be over here. They're going to be back that way and back that way. And as always, we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for closed hotel and villas located at property owned by the Culinary Institute. May I get a motion to review of the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Welcome back.
It's expanded team.
So, I did have, I was instructed to be chop-chop. So, we are going to try to be chop-chop. Thank you very much for the comment letters. They were helpful and succinct and we will respond, we will turn around the documents. Most of the comments, I think, are comments that we just need to clarify and modify, revise the agreements, the drawings, civil drawings and the architectural deck. There are a couple of issues that we thought we would raise tonight just to make sure we are clear as to the direction of the board. And the first one that wanted to address is lighting, because that was probably, I know, was on your mind, and we received rather extensive comments on that. We have Michael Costelli, who's lighting, who did all the lighting plans, and Michael Gotti, who you've worked with before. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael on the lighting, and he'll address three or four of the primary issues on that and try to have that exchanged. So, Michael.
We figured we needed another Michael on this team. Michael Dupree, Michael Zarin, Michael Gotti, Michael Costelli. So, yeah, Michael's here to join us. We do a lot of work with Michael in New York City. So, yeah, you know, the general comment, I think most of the notes on that letter were about the five-foot candle max excessive number. And, you know, one of the things that Mike and I were talking about is that the computer nowadays is something that, you know, when I got out of school, we didn't really have it. So, the exactness of the spikes in the foot candles as you walk your way around the site is a result of how the computer kind of does the photometrics. Right underneath, exactly right underneath the light itself, it's going to spike and then literally the next spot over.
No offense. Chop-chop. We're right familiar with this. Hot spots, we have the pin hotspots underneath canopy.
Understood.
Canopies for fueling stations. That noted. I've never seen such hotspots as this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We were talking a little bit about some of the anomalies and how typically we might do more of an average foot candle level in areas. So, again, for those specific locations, it is a factor of how the computer kind of reads that. Do you want to expound on that a little bit?
Also, the site is so large that these, the site is so large that even the grid that we have superimposed is about 10 feet by 10 feet. I think what we'll do to show you how those averages are in, more in that range is zoom into some of those areas and then bring out some of the statistics from the photometric model that show the averages that are in that range.
Thank you.
So, again, I think we've designed the space. Michael put together a package here I can just kind of run through of our intent on how the lighting is meant to be on the site. So, you'll be able to, oh, I got to fix this, sorry. Get out of that. Zoom in this way. You know, the way we've spaced out the lighting fixtures, our goal is here on the left as opposed to what you see on the right, a more, you know, level lighting design. And you can kind of see there are bollards and such. This is the intent of the design as we work our way through. There were a lot of other comments on the package that we got, and we're going to update the drawings to label each building. Sorry about that. The match lines on such a big site sometimes gets a little off, so we'll make sure that's super clear. We'll add a key plan to each site, each plan, so you'll know exactly where you're seeing it in the overall development. I'm going to add notes describing any discrepancies between any of the plans that were issued. I'm going to clarify the light fixtures that you called out. There was a few, and just make sure that the fixtures shown are also in the legend. We're going to add some of the notes, like no substitutions without approval, notes about the base of the lights that are on, that should be on grade, lighting on a path to the CIO across the bridge and such. We pointed those out, and we understand we're going to make those super clear. We're going to also include the lighting on the leased villas and the rental spaces. Those were not on the drawings. You guys had a voice.
The stair道 is all around.
Yeah, yeah. There was, we had our reasons, but they weren't very good reasons, so we're going to put them in there. Yeah. And then the last one that was mentioned was the uplighting. We did a little sketch here to kind of show you, there's a handful of architectural elements throughout the site, namely canopies, that we've uplighted. There aren't very many, but you guys did point them out. And our goal here, per, you know, the guidelines in the book, is uplight some architectural elements, certainly understanding that the dark sky goals are not to shine the light into the sky. The light is not shining into the sky. It's going to shine onto the architecture. And again, there's a plan we put together and we can add it to the set that basically shows, it's a very small number throughout the site, I'll get to it, next one, this. So you can kind of see, there's a couple of canopies we've designed, you know, as part of the architecture, and those are going to be uplit from below, but certainly hitting the canopy before it gets to the sky.
Robert, I'm working on this and thought they were underneath the canopies, but because the buildings weren't clear, we weren't always sure where we were looking.
Got it, got it. Okay. And that was it for the lighting stuff.
Any other questions or clarifications that you need to provide us in the lighting? We want to make sure when we go back and redesign and take these into consideration, we didn't miss anything, we have your clear direction. But I think the main point was the hot spot.
I've got a question. I was going to say, it's actually just a point, because the idea that you have a foot candle of 89.56, and then I guess if it's a 10-foot grid, 10 feet away, it's .07, is a little weird.
That one was a glitch.
That has to be a glitch.
Thanks for letting us use our magnifying glasses on top of our reading glasses to try to find these things, so.
It's a good catch, though. That's all.
That went over big, Chris.
Don't you figure it out that boards want to always nut things like that by now?
I'm the gas station.
And by the way, Larry, you should be listening, because you've got some problems on the same thing on your lighting as well. At any rate, thank you.
He's taking everybody's ask.
You've got 45 underneath the pavilion over there as well, but that's a different application. Please continue.
Okay. So, all right, on the architectural plan, Michael, do anything you want.
There was a couple of things we noticed, too, on the landscape drawings. The background is off on a couple of things, so you guys pointed it out, we're going to fix that. Just so you know, the site plan shown on A06 in the architectural set, that's the site plan. The more colorful versions that are subsequent to those two have a couple anomalies with the, some of the paths and such. A6 takes precedent. We're going to make that a note on our drawing, so you know which one is the correct one. So we'll make it super clear. You guys asked about the spirit storage. It's going to be on a separate site, and we're going to point out exactly where that is. You were asked a little bit about what that Hilltop amenity building is going to be doing. It's a wine and spirit tasting and education area, demonstration of spirits infusion. It's not to create product for sale, culinary pairings, classes, and special events and gatherings. So, just wanted to clarify that. The pre-contact areas on the architectural set will be updated to match all the pre-contact sites as shown on the civil drawings, because we had two pre-contact sites shown, and there's a couple more that we had to, we're going to have to put on those architectural drawings. Let's see, oh, you had some questions about whether it's a single building or multiple buildings. The two main buildings are separate, one's building on the left, building on the right, meant to be one building each, so it's not individual, they don't get broken up into individual buildings there. Let's see, oh, you did ask about the differences in, between our site plan, the profile of some of the buildings on our site plan as opposed to the profile that we provided on our elevation sheets. That's because on the site plan, we're seeing the roof lines, and on the elevations, what we wanted to show were the walls below the roof line. In some cases, the overhangs and the eaves are different. So you guys saw, and you pointed out, that looks bigger. It is bigger when we look at it from above, and we'll make a clear note on that as well. But you'll see the articulation of the exterior walls on the elevation sheet is really what we wanted to show in those key plans. There was a note about the pickleball courts. The one, the way we've represented those on the plan, it's shown as a 30-foot by 60-foot rectangle. The pickleball court itself is about 20 feet by 44 feet. So, we've accommodated space around the outside of those for bicycles or however they get there, and then gathering spaces and places to watch, you know, watch the pickleball. You guys have brought up a little bit about the sound, they're just as concerned as you, so we're kind of trying to figure out how we mitigate some of that with some landscaping and such around those. But we'll update that with some additional information, so those questions are answered.
We talked about the sound, because we hear it from neighbors whenever they're having lots of pickleball tournaments.
Yeah, okay.
And they're pretty far away from the park where it sits.
Oh, yeah, ADA parking. Yeah, we're going to be providing handicap parking per code outside the main buildings. Majority of the people who are visiting the site will be, there's a valet parking system that's going to be constantly running, so the majority of handicap individuals will be, their cars will be valeted. The ones that are not, per code, we will have a space in front of the main buildings, the public buildings for that, and then they'll be, be able to be brought around the site with the golf carts and the other ways we get other people around the site. So, we've accommodated that per code, and we'll also make that clear.
Chris, on retaining walls?
Question of design.
With regards to the design of the retaining walls, what we're hoping to do is maybe provide you a contact of what the materials are that they're contemplating, but not necessarily do the design at this stage, do it as part of the building permit package for all the retaining walls on site. Is that something that's acceptable?
You've got to get a little bit closer to the mic. So, very soft-spoken individual.
So, in terms of the retaining walls, what we would like to do is give you kind of a menu of the materials that we're looking to incorporate throughout the site for where the different retaining walls are strategically located. But we're hoping to do the design as part of the building permit process.
Yeah, we don't have a problem. And I think one of the notes that is on there says that, that any walls over four feet have to be designed by a PE, and then I just said on here that...
You were looking for them prior to site plan approval. We're wondering if we could do it during the building permit.
So here it is. Label all retaining walls to state walls over four feet are required to be designed by a nearest state PE prior to building permits being issued for phase blank. And if you can just, you know, identify what phase...
What phases are.
That, like, the wall's going to be in, and then if you could just put some preliminary, like, elevations on the top and bottom of the wall.
We can add more elevations than what we're currently showing.
And then I said, the only thing is, on sheet C132, there's a retaining wall that's adjacent to the road, and I think it's got to be built as part of the road, so it's not really, well, I guess, yeah, but there's not going to be, there's not going to be any building permit issued for that particular phase that the road is in.
Yes.
So I said, you know, depending on the height, that that one should be, should be, like, designed as part of the approval.
So there will be a building permit. They have to secure a building permit before they could start their site work for that, is the way in which we understood. So, we're preparing building permits so that we can do the site work. So you're saying we don't need a building permit in order to initiate the site work?
No.
Okay.
You need the chairman's signature on this, huh?
Yeah. Okay. So anyway, so you'll, so you'll go look at that one.
That one wall, then.
And then the other thing I said was, on number 11, the planning board should review wall aesthetics if natural stone walls are not used. These can be catalog cuts for now until designs are finalized during the building permit process. These catalog cuts could be shown on the plan view or detail sheets, depending on where you've got room. And like you said, you could, you could label wall 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then just tag it. So you can discuss it with...
So nothing over, everything over four feet, we could do that during the building permit process, then?
Yeah. And I think that, I think, you know, the board would like to see what the...
We just want to see what the materials are going to be.
You know, aesthetics, just, you know, like, a catalog cut would be fine for now.
Yep, we could do that.
Chris, do you want to address the five-acre waiver, disturbance in the waiver?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, we can, we can add all the notes that you requested for that in the event that they want to have that five-acre waiver.
Well, one of the things that we, one of the other, one of the other comments was that the erosion control plan should be broken down by construction phasing. So, my guess is that you're going to go over the five, which is okay. We don't have a problem with it, but, well, I should, you know, the peanut, the peanut gallery over here in the back weighed in.
So, so we gave a, we broke our plans up into two different methods. We gave a construction phasing, so when they're implementing the particular phase, here's all the measures you're putting in place before they're going to start that phase. That was through our construction phasing plans. And then our overall erosion semi-control plan was, as that particular phase evolves, and they're then going to switch over to a new erosion semi-control plan, because you're going to start building your road, you're going to have your catch bases in, so you'll have your inlet protection that goes in there. So that's why we kind of had the erosion semi-control plans for the overall site, and then we had our phasing plans, the construction phasing, to implement for each individual phase before they start the construction. That's how we broke those phasing plans up.
So, I think, I think you're, I think you're saying that you don't think that you need to prepare erosion control plans by phase?
Yeah, well, I guess we have them there, and the phasing plans are ready for the construction phase.
What, erosion control?
Yeah, that's in our phasing plans. Our construction phasing plans have all the erosion semi-control.
Maybe I missed it. I'll look again. If I did, then I apologize.
Yeah, we had them all in there, and then what I'm saying is for the overall plan is we have an overall.
All right, I'll look at it again. I'm sure we're going to have more, like, discussion on my comments. You know, I'm just thinking that, you know, even though, you know, your intent is, you know, like, great to try to be at the five acres or under, you know, in reality, when you're going to move on to the next phase, there'll be, like, a little bit left in the prior phase that's still going to be undisturbed, and you may be over the five, so why don't we just...
It's a great recommendation, and I think, I think you saw the level of detail we provided. We can add those additional notes to support the five-acre requirement.
Yeah, it's no big deal. Then you have to write, you have to write a letter requesting it, and then that's going to go in the SWIP. So we can, we can go with that. We just had some notes that we put on Bellfield that were good, so we can give those to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Pete, comment 37 regarding the SWIP. Just want to be clear, do we need...
Do you need to tell us which memo you're referring to? You got four?
I'm sorry, Michael.
Can you tell us which memo you're referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm on, yeah, I'm on Pete's RINIA Engineering Design Comment, page four, note 37.
Two days ago?
Dated March 4th. Sorry, sorry. 37, just want to be clear, does the SWIP need to be approved prior to conditional site plan approval? Do we have to have a finalized approved SWIP, or will that be a condition?
I mean, I think we're...
I think we're there.
It's always a condition of signing.
Oh, wait a minute, we don't have, we don't, what did you say? A preliminary approval?
What you're saying is, can it be a condition of approval? For a signed SWIP?
I think our SWIP is...
Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. I just don't...
It's just these comments here that you want to address if we're incorporating the five-acre waiver, but I mean, our calculations.
Yeah, no, no, no. I just didn't, I just didn't remember where we left off, because when we, when we did most of the SWIP review, that was when I was still at CPL. I can get the old CPL, well, you can even give me the old CPL letters on that. I think we're in pretty good shape, but I want to sit down with Tad and go over. So we just want to clean it up, so I, I think we're pretty far, you know, along that if, you know, finalizing the SWIP was a condition of final approval.
Okay.
As long as, you know, Tad and I meet with Chris, and, you know, and we all think we're, you know, 75, 80, 85% good.
Good, okay, thank you. So, in the spirit of chop-chop, that's all the comments we had. I think they were self-explanatory, they were comprehensive, and we will endeavor, there's, you know, there's a bunch of work on civil drawings, mostly, as I said, mostly Scribner and just filling in, clarifying, and conforming with the comments. We were planning to try to get them in no later than April 2nd for your April 17th meeting. So if that works for you all, we will try to provide you with what we hope are final revised drawings, and hope we'll be at a point where we can proceed from there with final approval.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Or conditional site plan approval.
I was going to say, I had an overall comment that didn't, for whatever reason, didn't end up in the memos. So, I don't know, now's the time you want me to read it?
Go ahead, please.
So phasing, we were talking about...
That's where I was just going to go myself, okay.
Oh, you can go there.
No, because we had a long discussion. It looks as though you have parking garage in phase seven. It also looks as though phase one is going to have the emergency entry and exit, but that same path on your maps goes all the way to the bridge, pedestrian bridge. So you're proposing in that first phase, which is tree clearing, to go all the way to the pedestrian bridge?
Yeah.
Because we haven't analyzed that so far. All we looked at was the trees in the area where you'll be starting extending St. Andrews over. We did not look at all the tree removal that you're proposing, I believe.
No, so the, those plans that you're referring to in terms of how they, is geared towards how they anticipate producing their site work. So the reason why, you know, if this gets approval and they could start work again...
If you recall, you're asking us, you've already asked us to approve the tree felling. Are you doing tree felling, in other words, where the emergency entry exit is?
No, that wasn't included. Where the emergency access is, yes. The DOT right away, we are.
No, I mean, all the way up.
We are not. That is not shown on our plans. That's not what was approved. The reason why we're showing it on the phasing plans is, the next phase of construction is to start that clearing, because we have to bring utilities into the site, we've got to bring water, we've got to bring gas. The reason why it's going down to the pedestrian bridges, that's the point where we have to connect our sewer across to the existing pump station. So the intent of this is to clear the main accessways so that we could put in the main trunk lines for our water, sewer, and drainage. So that's why the phasing of that is laid out in the manner in which it is. So the construction phasing plan that I provided is really is associated with how we're going to proceed with the site work. The actual, I think it was sheet 133, was how, you asked us, how are you going to phase your actual building construction? So the building construction, the stackers, were going to be built in conjunction with all the rentable villas around the Loop Road. So the intent was, they were going to first come in, do the site, you know, rough site grading for the, to get access throughout the site. Then it was going to be the hearth building, and the event barn, then it was going to be the, I believe it was the spa they were going to work on, and then they were going to do the rentable villas around the Loop Road, and the stackers and back house building that was on sheet 133.
So, you're going to be building what I'll call the amenity buildings first?
No. The hearth building is one of the first things they're looking to build, and the event barn, then the spa.
I consider those all amenities, sorry.
Okay.
But it enhances the guest experience.
And then the rentable villas, but you, the stackers are going to be constructed at the same time as the rentable villas around the Loop Road. Based on the length of construction, the hearth and the event barn and the spa are going to take longer than the rentable villas and the stacker areas. So the intent is they'll all be completed at the same time.
So if the rentable villas are rentable, is there, where would they check in? When people arrive, just at the gate, where would they check in and go throughout? There's not going to be the main...
Well, your main road will be constructed.
No, I'm trying to figure out...
Are you intending to just open everything at the same time? You're not going to open...
That's what we're confused at, about.
Well, the intent is to open, and tell me if I'm wrong, the intent is to open the hearth building, the event barn, the spa, and the rentable units all at the same time.
But they wouldn't have the parking.
Well, that's, they're going to park the stackers.
The stackers don't get built until the villas are being constructed.
The rentable villas. The ones around, the villas around the Loop Road?
To the west.
Around the Loop Road, on the western side. When those are being constructed, the stackers are being constructed.
Just different villas are, they're titled villas on the plans, is what it is, I think.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
They're all on the west portion.
Yeah, right. The ones that are like the townhouses, I think, right? On that, that pass the...
Correct. They go around the Loop Road on the west side of the site. The build-out plan shows...
They're not the leasehold.
Right. I'm calling them the rentables, not leaseholds.
Yeah. So leaseholds are rentable, of course, as well, so that's why it's confusing.
Good. But those plans, if you look at our preliminary build-out, it shows when they're getting constructed, the stackers are getting constructed.
So, what, what, I think the construction phasing might require some more narrative and discussion to make sure it all works, but apart from construction phasing, there's a concept of site plan phasing, and this is going to be very important, I've mentioned this a few times, but if you want to get a CO on any building shown on this entire plan, you have to build out the entirety of said plan, every tree, every sidewalk, every retaining wall, because you have not presented any phased site plans. So, if you're all opening at the same time, I think that's fine. You get your COs at the end, and you have a big grand opening, but if you were intending to open one building while the others were under construction, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work with this plan. So, I just want everyone to think through, because I don't want to get to the end of the project and then there's a scramble.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, so the individual leasehold buildings on the east side, you're insinuating that you would, you would need to have COs for all of them as well before you can open up?
The whole plan, because it's one site plan.
Yeah, if you don't do fins.
Because the CO process for the, for the town is the way that we do our checklist to ensure that all the landscaping went in properly, utilities went in, curbing went in.
Stormwater.
So you don't get your CO till everything is done. So they're not going to issue partial COs until everything's done, unless you come up with a phasing plan, just like we did for phase one, which lets you do the tree felling. You're going to need phasing plans for each...
Let me make this, let me make this simpler, maybe.
Okay.
So for really large projects, like, say, River Ridge, which is a huge amount of townhouses, if we hadn't phased it, so the site plan sections are phased, then you'd be building them, and no one could live in them, because there wouldn't be a CO until the whole site's done. It's market-driven, so it's been done in sections. Each we go along the way, so they keep renewing and saying, this is our next phase, this is our next phase.
So the solution is to phase the site plan for the leasehold villas?
Bellfield across the street from you is doing the same thing.
So I guess, so we, I guess, I thought we were insinuating that or inferring that with how we did our preliminary build-out plan?
Well, that's what I was just going to ask, you've got to see 153, the preliminary build-out plan, so what, what if you look at that and provide, like, a table that in, whatever, phase, phase, phase one, here's, here's all the things that are going to be done in phase one for us to look at. I did that, I did that on a similar project that I'm, well, I'm not doing that, I was doing it at CPL, where we had a phasing, and we listed, you know, in phase one, you know, water line from here to here, you know, landscaping, you know, for buildings, dot, 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 you know, we, you know, we listed everything that was going to be done, so that it was clear to the planning board that, okay, the, these are the things that are going to be done in that phase. I don't know how that's...
So, I, I think what we could do... So I, I, I think what we could do...
Can you pull up the phasing plans, the one that you're saying is...
Yeah, I don't know, but I agree with you.
Right, but it can't just be the sort of...
We didn't, we didn't resubmit 153, so we didn't bring it with us tonight, but...
Well, what's the date? I can...
The last minute for it was 10/31/23.
Oh, yeah, no, I can't bring it up there.
So this is really just designed to help you guys later on, in other words?
Yeah, so this is good. I, I, I think, I think our C-153 plan could be expanded because what you're describing, Pete, in terms of what are you building in that phase, we have all that listed in the, in those phases right now, like, for example, our last phase of this project, which was build out of all the leasehold villas. That, that was intended to occur after the, the main portions of the resort were built. So I think maybe we need to provide a little bit more detail in our descriptions as to when we would look to obtain COs instead of calling it a build-out plan, maybe we need to call it a preliminary phase, or a phase build-out plan.
Phasing plan, that's what we call them, is phasing plans.
Yeah.
So you're saying it wasn't in the most recent...
We didn't resubmit it recently.
Construction logistics, December 4th?
No, it was called, well... That was a construction, the, the submittal in December was related to the ground disturbance, those plans for the SWIP. The sheet, C-153 was last submitted on 10/31/2023.
It would have been, it would have been November 4th.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that particular drawing was in the set that you made, like, for me, which was...
Correct. I'm saying, I didn't bring it with us tonight because that wasn't part of our last submittal that we just made to the town.
Do you have one lying?
I, I, I get the gist of, I don't think we need to bring it up, but I understand what you're looking for.
So why don't we do this?
We can elaborate the detail on it.
Why don't we do this, you know, assuming that, you know, the board is okay with this, that perhaps we need a call that, you know, board members, some like board members are on, Michael and us, and maybe we could go over, you know, that and make sure that we're all, we're all on the same, like, page, and then if you have any other questions, either on my letter or Bonnie's letter, we can, we can go over them then, too. I don't know how, how that sounds, but before you get, like, rolling here, we should probably just tick those things off. And the other thing I want to mention before, before I forget about it, is I had the comment in here about we had gotten a letter from the fire department after we did the seeker determination that there was still some questions. I know that Dan, Dan's here, and, have you guys, you know, like, spoken to Dan tonight?
Yes, I, well, I spoke to Dan before tonight.
Okay.
As soon as we got your comment and we heard, we heard about Dan's comments, spoke with Dan about scheduling a meeting next week, and with our people. We had previously met in December and had worked, brought our consultant, fire compliance consultant, and had provided drawings of all the roadmaps and zoning compliance and suppression access and the like. We had a very good meeting. When we saw the comment letter that came from Dan, immediately called Dan and tried to schedule a meeting next week, maybe tentatively next Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me go back again now.
Yeah, no, we kinda got a little...
Kinda got out of order. Ms. Franson, any comments additional?
No, I think they're all set out in my memos. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments about phasing in particular? No?
Anything else?
We'll work that out. Anything else? Mr. Zatero, any comments?
Nope, I'm good for now.
Ms. Paudero, any additional comments?
No.
Thank you. Let me start to my right, Mr. Gercio.
Uh, no.
Mr. Oliver.
No additional comments.
Ms. Dexter.
Nope.
Ms. Wasser.
No comment.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
No. Come on, Rob, we're going. I got excited.
Is that why you're using Stephanie's nameplate?
Oh, whoops.
There you go.
The transcript is...
I had no idea.
Mr. Vee?
Uh, no comment.
Did I hear, Mr. Vee, you're taking a trip tonight?
I'm going to Vegas at four in the morning to go riding in the desert for a week.
Good for you. Good for you.
Come back to us.
So, yeah. I have a couple of additional questions for the, what we're gonna have, the wine tasting, culinary classes, pairing, you said. So is there cooking done in premises in there? It just doesn't matter if there is, it's just, I don't think so.
No, no, no cooking.
It's gonna be bringing something already made, like a pairing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And the pickleball court, we thought that was thirty by sixty, you said it's actually twenty by forty-four, I believe?
Well, no, what we show on the site plan is an outline of thirty by sixty. Inside that platform will be the court drawn on the, on the ground.
Right, I think you gave me the dimensions, is twenty by forty-four?
It's twenty wide by forty-four long.
I believe that's what I wrote down. So is there gonna be seating around this, where people can sit?
Not fixed seating, but yeah, probably loose, loose seating as, as needed. If there's an event or something, there's gonna be multiple people there, but that wasn't the intent.
Folding chairs, you mean?
Yeah, folding, yeah, something like that. It's not really meant as a spectator thing, I think it's just more of an exercise.
I was just curious.
No, no, I, I hear you.
But this is where, in other words, golf carts and bicycles could be parked as well in that perimeter area. Okay. Well, do you need to have the meeting about, getting a narrative going about the phasing in terms of how it proceeds again, because it's based on, we want to make sure you get COs? That's basically all that it is.
Yes, the phasing.
And, for example, River Ridge, if you guys have seen it, maybe, Michael, you have, but it's, it's townhomes, you can't really see much of it, it's kind of like what you're proposing, most of it's behind a, do you call that a ridge line?
Yeah.
But it goes, and then scales, it goes down toward the river. But with those, we hadn't, it was approved by our prior board and they didn't actually think about phasing, so we had to re, we had to amend the site plan to show what the construction was. Otherwise, they would have had to wait till they had built the last one, it wouldn't be open. Yeah, so, but there are ways, like I said, we want to make sure we know which landscaping, curbing, everything that's gonna be done in that phase will be done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, well, actually, Stephanie, you made a point a minute ago, I think, just to be super clear, the entire development is meant to open at the same time with the exception of the leasehold villas, right? Those, as they get sold, they'll be built in those areas. So I think if we delineate it clearly, I think, like you said, very, it was clear, all of the areas are meant to open at the same time, with the exception of leasehold villas, so.
Okey-dokey. Then let me ask you, does any member of the public could like to speak about this application tonight?
Come on up.
Hey!
We have a hand mic, I believe. By the way, note to Chris, next time, sit over there, it's a lot better for you. I don't have to turn around to your back, I just realized you usually sit over there. Hey, Dan, welcome.
Hello.
Famous Dan.
My name's Dan Nichols, I'm the Fire Commissioner with the Roosevelt Fire District. Primary but not exclusive coverage of this parcel is within the Roosevelt Fire District. As alluded to before, we communicated with you in November about our concerns of the project. We did have a meeting with them on 4 December to talk about the plan that was submitted. There was two main items that were left needing conveni, convenience of, or convening, I should say, of, one is about the arrangement of the taxable improvement versus the non-taxable property it sits upon and the long-term effects of that, which we're concerned about from a taxpayer standpoint. Secondly, is the site plan layout. It is a three-dimensional, not a two-dimensional product, project as we think about, okay? So we think about roads and they're flat, but as we talk about fire apparatus moving around, going up and down hills and around turns with all of the natural amenities of trees and lighting and curbs and sidewalks, they become a bigger challenge. Adding on top of that is a lot of these locations don't have similar access for our responding fire apparatus as compared to other projects that we're used to for all volunteer force to adequately serve. Those being on the housing that's available on pathways, so on so forth, turnarounds, proper turning radiuses and so forth to get the fire apparatus around. The buildings create a unique challenge. If you think about it, they're, some of the housing is elevated from glass from floor to ceiling on areas where we can't get the ladder trucks, so our normal operation would be to bring a ground ladder. But where do you place a ground ladder on an all-glass wall? And still asking the question where the emergency escape and rescue openings would be that are required for, for sleeping rooms. Just, again, challenges that our all-volunteer force is not used to facing, and in this phase, we think that there's some opportunities to modify the site plan for better access, better firefighting ability, and just better traffic flow throughout the premises, as well as looking at how it connects with the community at large. So we do have, we've spoken, I, I feel confident with their subconsultant, Terp Engineering, and Joe Plati, who is a fellow fire protection engineer, to go through and, and make this work, but at this time, we'd ask you to pause any approvals till you hear back from us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health and safety is a big concern, as always. Mr. Zaren, do you want to address his first concern about the taxability?
Excuse me?
Would you like to address his first concern about taxability?
Yes, we, as you know, I, I had thought that they had seen this. We did provide a full fiscal analysis that was performed by AKRF, well-respected group. Our site is gonna be taxable, it's gonna be, and that, in that report, it estimated that we would be paying approximately $105,000 annually to the fire district. That report is, was provided to you and it's in the FEAF and on the website and the like. With respect to the fire apparatus, accessibility, the various systems, the road, the radiies, the, and the like, as, as Dan mentioned, we had retained Terp Consulting, Joe Plati, a person who, very knowledgeable in fire compliance. We've met with the fire district twice, we met with them the last time, Zoom call, December 4th. In, in preparation for that meeting, Mr. Plati prepared full drawings with all the radiies, road widths, accessibilities, code compliance, and the like, and that was provided to the fire district in sufficiently advance of the meeting so that they could review those plans. We thought we had a very good meeting, we thought we had, frankly, we had thought we had satisfied their concerns and issues, we took them very seriously and had a good, you know, positive meeting. So we're pretty confident that we've taken all these things into consideration, including all the buildings are sprinkled, including all the villas, and that under the fire compliance codes gives you a certain amount of flexibility and discretion. And obviously, it was one of the important issues that we looked at was access of the fire apparatus. So we look forward to when we receive this email, we, like I said, called Dan immediately and we'll reconvene and hope we'll be able to, you know, demonstrate that, you know, we've addressed the concerns and if not, we'll come back to you, but we're confident in the discussions we've had to date that we'll be able to do that, and we think we have the proper consultants and understanding of their issues, so.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols will keep us surprised as well, I know. Would anyone else like to speak about this application from the public? There being none, should we adjourn this to the April 17th meeting, I believe?
Wait, wait, wait.
Oops. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, wait, first, first, may I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion of the site plan only? This has been a public hearing on both site plan and subdivision or lot consolidation. So I'm gonna motion to adjourn just that portion of the site plan to April 17th.
So moved.
Second.
I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
May I get a motion to close the public hearing on subdivision only?
So moved.
Second.
I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Now we have a resolution.
Resolution to grant conditional final subdivision plat approval, CIA Hotel and Villas, March 6, 2024. Resolution number 2019-39G. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, that the planning board hereby grants final subdivision approval to the subdivision plat and authorizes the chair or has authorized designated to sign the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of sheet V-101 to depict the zoning district boundary line labeled with each zoning district. Three, approval by the planning board attorney of a deed consolidating the lots, along with an undertaking to record the approved consolidation deed with the Dutchess County Clerk after the subdivision plat is filed. Four, revision of sheet V-101, bottom right-hand corner to read as follows, sheet one of three. Number five, revision of sheet V-101 to revise the area tables to correctly reflect the new acreage. Six, the revision of sheet V-101 to reference the Winnicky Land Trust easement.
Second. If there are any further discussion, I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes or abstentions? Motion carries. We'll be talking, I'm sure, before April 17th.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Keldee Holdings. This is an application for a two-lot minor subdivision located on South Quaker Lane. And this is the first time the board has seen this.
Yep.
Yeah. See you out there.
You want the desert, too?
Yeah.
Feel left out. Gee.
I wonder about any rights to the, I can't imagine. It's free. Okay. I just had it. I'll hold the show. Yeah, yeah.
It might work from here, Bruce.
Just put in the thumb drive.
It's okay, Bruce, if you want to use it.
Maybe you can get our streetlights from here. If I can see.
Just wanted to make sure I carry this over.
Good evening.
Hi, everybody, Mayor Jonathan Verneber, CT Mail, I'm the project surveyor for Mr. Bruce Keller's house. Did the initial survey, and he's looking to do a minor subdivision around an existing house, keep the rest of the property for recreational use.
That's pretty simple.
We're all set?
Let me go ahead and start with consultants. Ms. Franson?
I'm still in the process of reviewing.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
Ms. Moss, any comments?
Yeah, I've, I've reviewed this a couple of times already with the applicant. I'm not sure that we're there yet. There are some structures that are labeled as dilapidated residential buildings, they need to either be residents or be...
Raised.
Not a residence because we have to calculate density, so we need to know what's existing, what's planned. There's also a garage that is on the vacant piece, which would leave it as the only structure, which would be an accessory structure, so that's not allowed. So there's some things that need to be worked out, also the open space needs to be more defined.
The, the, you said, but word garage, it's an old...
Can I use the microphone?
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Pull it towards you. Pull the whole thing towards you.
What's that?
There you go.
The, the house itself, it's shown there where I want to take out two and a half acres and sell the house because I don't want to be a landlord, and I want to keep the balance of the property for recreation. There's a multitude of old structures on this property that go back, I couldn't even tell you how long, maybe back into early 1900s. Across the street where the fifteen-acre parcel is, there's an old lean-to, I'm assuming it was used for cattle or something when they did farming on this property. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property, it's all lined by stone walls and stuff, and it's a beautiful area. The, the, the structure on the north of plan here is an old garage barn where they must have stored stuff in there. I have a picture of it on my file, which is that structure there. It's, it's a dilapidated old, you know, they must, I don't know what they did, I think at one point they had an insulation company in that space, because there's an old machine in there right now. So I wasn't gonna do a lot with that, I was just gonna maybe keep it for myself for the purpose of maybe storing a couple pieces of, like, you know, a UTV or something like that. I have a picture of it on my file, which is that structure there. It's, it's a dilapidated old, you know, they must, I don't know what they did. I think at one point they had an insulation company in that space because there's an old machine in there right now. So I wasn't going to do a lot with that. I was just going to maybe keep it for myself for the purpose of maybe storing a couple pieces of like, you know, a UTV or something like that. I don't see myself taking a house and renovating it into, you know, where I put windows and outside siding on the house and going ahead and trying to sell that and say, oh, by the way, you have to, this is your garage as well, or barn. I don't think they're going to get any use out of that thing. So I would rather not have to do that if I can avoid having to add that into the house itself.
Right. The, the issue is one that when we're doing these things and making lots, we can't create a non-conformity with the current code. So, you know, things happened a long time ago, things were built out, but right now, you are not allowed to have an accessory structure unless it's accessory to a principal structure. And so I think one of the problems is that leaving that on the lot by itself creates an accessory structure without a master, primary use, yeah, without a principal structure.
Another way to say that is the storage, like if I wanted to just add a piece of land, say I'm going to build something on there just to store stuff, storage is not under our code. It's just law. It's not a principal use. You have to have a principal use to have a secondary or ancillary use. So if you have commercial site or residence, you can have a storage thing because you're storing then your stuff for the principal use, if that makes any sense. So.
Yeah, but if that, if that was, say, on the other side of the property, would you tell me I'd have to make that part of the house? I, I just, I know.
What you mean by saying on the other side of the property? Can you point out what you're talking about?
Well, if you take and make it 300 yards and back in the woods of the property, it's an 80-acre parcel. So if it wasn't there, but back, way back in the woods somewhere, would you tell me I have to make it part of the house by based on code?
We might ask you to go to the zoning board and get a variance to allow a, an accessory structure without a principal use. I mean, that's some of the things we're talking through. And so it, by moving the line, you might avoid more discussion about how to, how to leak, you know, how to get you to a yes. How to get to a subdivision that can be approved by the planning board.
Just let me looking stern. It doesn't really matter where it is, if it's on either parcel or if it's way in the back, we'd see it on the survey, that's the problem.
Yeah.
And we want to be helpful here, I promise. We're just trying to figure out how to do it legally.
Yeah, I understand.
What's the dilapidated dwelling?
Well, in the.
It's by the water.
No, no, that's the barn, but up by the lake.
It's by the water, yeah.
Up by there, they, they, there's, there's actually like, right there, there was, I think at one point, one of the grandsons of the, of the, maybe great-grandson of the individual that bought this back in 1800 sometime, and it was in their family up until I bought it. Because at that point I bought it, it was in a trust. They had a, a blacksmith shop back there where he did blacksmithing and they needed power, so they ran power underground to it, to underground transformer. My mind is not to do any more than, but to remove that, to get rid of it. I want to, I want to, it's like, it's all plywood structure, it's all crumbled down leg.
Well, dwelling implies someone could live there. So that's why.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's not a, it's.
It's not a residence.
No, I, I didn't take any pictures of it, but it's, it's basically, it's, it's a old plywood structure, the roof claved in on it. It's, you can't, you can't, nothing, there's no electricity there in it. It's not like it has running water or electricity. They just, they, it's an abandoned structure.
But there's an electric box right next to it, that's why we were confused.
Yeah, I know, it's existing. There's an underground transformer that comes from the street and there's two meters there because they had two different little old structures. My intent is to get rid of that. I have no plan on leaving it there. There's a lot of garbage on the property. So my mind is saying, from my standpoint, because I am, you know, somebody that loves the outdoors and so forth, is my, my purpose is to get rid of it. There's probably 30 tires back there. I want to dispose of all this stuff properly and also get rid of it and clean up the property. Again, across the street, there's like an old, there's an old car, there's an old boat. My intent is to get it off the property and enhance the value of the property, also make it where it should be. It shouldn't have all this old garbage that was left by, over years of time of people just dumping on it.
It might be simpler to get rid of that corrugated metal shed and cover your ATV with something else.
Yeah, no, I, listen, if, if I can't keep it and, and maybe do something with it, then I'll knock it down. I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it hard for me. I want to get rid of the house. I want to, I don't want to be a landlord. I want to just take that two and a half acres with the house. And, because people say, why aren't you renting? I said, I don't want to be a landlord. I'm just, you know, I'm an electrical contractor, I just want to, looking to retire soon and enjoy myself, and I don't want to have those trouble headaches.
Electrical contractor, you must have enjoyed my, my scolding tone about the foot candles.
I was listening.
So you do have the option, you would have the option, it would lengthen out the approval time to go to the zoning board of appeals and seek a use variance? Is that what, that sort of path could be?
I mean, that's one path. We can go back and look, we just had questions because it did say dwelling. We thought maybe that was the principal structure and the barn was accessory to it, but you're saying not a dwelling.
There's a, there's a picture, let's picture the house up. The house, which is obviously up the hill from the, the barn, I call it a barn, I think, I don't think it was ever a garage, but barn, that's the house. So I put new windows and siding on it.
That's the new, that's when you want it to sell.
So I don't know if you ever drove by it beforehand, but it was in very poor condition.
Looks nice.
And it needed, it needed, you know, some TLC and that's what I did for it. So I wanted, you know, my intent is to try to put it on the market as soon as possible.
So a few other, a few other things. When you subdivided land, right now, there's a density that goes over the parent parcel. You get a certain, you know, potential number of units based on the acreage. And when you subdivide, you have to assign the density between the two lots. So using easy numbers, let's say you could have 10 houses, you're going to give the lot, you're going to sell maybe one or two potential houses, one probably, and then you're going to keep nine.
It's one because it's 2.5 already.
Right, and you'll keep nine. So we just need this labeled on the plan so that we have a zoning table. So that moving forward, when, let's say you sell the big lot in 10 years, someone, there's no question about how much density it's allowed to have.
And by the way, this actually adds value to, so that someone can immediately see. I could get eight houses, 10 houses, whatever it is.
Yeah. No, I have no problem doing what you, I need to do, is basically bring it up to what you want to see on that vacant land.
And then, under our code, in this, in this section of zoning greenbelt, you have to set aside 30% of the open space. And there's a calculation, both the density and the open space, that involves the wetlands. So you have to subtract out the, I haven't done subdivisions in a while. Back out the wetlands.
Wetlands proper.
Proper.
Both federal and state.
Right. And.
Subtract that from the parent parcel.
Parcel.
And then do your division for the density for the resultant acreage.
Right. I believe we had provided a, like a cursory calculation. That was one of the questions I wanted to, to get to today, or this evening, was the wetlands situation, seeing as a large parcel, 80-ish acres. We took these wetlands from, you know, GIS clearinghouse and other public sources. And curious if we need to have it actually delineated by a biologist, which probably won't take place for a few weeks until the right plants are out and cost of excess of $6,000 to $8,000 for the client.
These are all labeled federal? Are we sure they're still federal wetlands? There's a state one, there's a state one, but I mean, most of these wetlands look, I don't think they're going to be navigable to, directly to. The latest Supreme Court ruling would indicate that these are no longer federal wetlands, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, when was that ruling?
This year.
Yeah.
No, not last year, in 2023.
Was it? Yeah.
SCOTUS has basically now clarified, I'll put it politely, that unless there's a direct navigation toward a federal, like a federal wetland, like a river, there's not really, it's not like a wetland.
The federal government hasn't updated their regulations.
No, and that's the problem. And it's also.
In 2025, D E C is going to lower their threshold to seven point something. Yeah.
Seven point four, as well as, as well as also.
So you're in the sweet spot.
Take jurisdiction of wetlands of importance.
Well, I mean, the question is, do you want these, well, there's two questions. Do we count them as wetlands? I think we have to because.
They're still wetlands, they're just not necessarily federal.
Right, jurisdictional, whose jurisdiction is it?
But without.
Going all through Army Corps, I know that, you don't want to wait for letter, for, for JDs. So what we should do is, Ted, is it acceptable that they use the square footage of the wetlands as shown?
I'll leave that up to the board. Because it's, it's pretty far away from where the development's going to be, maybe we could add a note that says, prior to any future subdivision or development.
There you go.
That they would have to, that, that, at that point, they would have to come out.
We did that, we did that with another, with another application.
But that is the opening statement.
Would you be able to provide that note? Verbatim, that was done, you said Winnicky, it was in a Winnicky Land Trust.
It's, it's, is that what we would add on to the plans so that in future subdivisions, if you wanted to develop it in the future?
Right.
At that point, they have to be redid, redelineated?
Yeah, you would say, you would, yeah, you would say, John, that, you know, wetlands shown on this map were taken from, you know, GIS data or whatever you said. And then, you know, in the future, if the land is going to be subdivided, then, you know, the wetlands have to be flagged and.
And rededicated.
Rededicated.
Certified, as well certified.
Certified.
Although if the, I believe the open space is proposed where the D E C wetland is?
Correct, correct.
So once that has its easement over it, you know, the size has been calculated into it, it would be the other wetlands you'd be looking at, I think. Yes, Bonnie?
So just quick, because I'm looking at the definition. So it states, wetlands shall include all portions of D E C regulated wetlands, all portions of Army Corps regulated wetlands, and all portions of wetlands not regulated by either D E C or Army Corps.
That's what I was going to say. So even if they're not federal, they're still included inside.
In the calculation, yes.
So you would make your calculation based on this, I hate to say square footage, but the area of all the wetlands there, that's detracted out, then you would get, that's your calculation for how much density you would get. You can assign that density to the other parcel. You could assign it to the 2.5 acre because you could further subdivide. The average has to be 2.5 acres, if that makes sense. But I don't think it makes a lot of sense for you to say the other one gets another house because of well-insepted concerns here. So.
Right.
In other words, there's still limitations on development based on water supply, wastewater, et cetera, on these sites. But you can assign the density then based on that. We would also then put a conservation easement over where the open space area is. We talk about delineating the open space in terms of some sort of monuments to know where it is, as we've done before. And then we can get you through. If that makes any sense.
And I don't know how to assign the density to the piece that's on the other side of Quaker. That'll be up to you. If you want any over there or not.
Okay. So if your parent parcel was 80?
It's the same lot.
It's the same lot. It's land hooked. So you would.
They rode through it, so I don't even know if it should be land hooked. Well, it's.
It is, it's same parcel, yeah.
It's the same lot. I mean, they could subdivide it now if they wanted, as part of this. Otherwise, we'll make a note, you know, we'll make it very clear that this is all.
In other words, if you wanted to subdivide that side of it, you could have, you could sell that as well.
Now's the time.
Yeah. No.
Okay.
I, I don't, I mean, not, I'll never do it.
You want some privacy when you're over there, you're outdoors.
Yeah. It's a very nice area, it borders the power lines and stuff.
Oh, I, there are many people up here who are born and raised, I've lived here 30 years, I know where this is.
Yeah. I think we put that on the backend of it, showed the delineation of the.
Well, we're trying to find that, yeah. Sorry, I have no transition lenses. So if I look sad, I'm not used to it.
Yeah, but he doesn't want to be. So I think, I, I, we need to go back and think about the accessory and principal, and they should as well, and see whether moving a lot line would achieve this.
The backend of the property, I had kind of delineated an area.
As the open space.
As open space.
I guess it is 30% of the site, and that's not a developmental area anyway, back there.
Yeah.
But just make sure that it's about 30%. You don't want to give over more, unless you want to give more, you can.
Yeah. And it's, it's bordered by rock walls all the way around. It's beautiful. I mean, I'm wondering where these rocks came from. But I think a lot of it was done after the Civil War.
Actually, I know about all that. I, I, yes, yes. I used to lead the town's stormy building team. I did it for eight years. Eight years, I know the various ways to dry stack, there's different ways to build them too. Rebel walls, glaciated rock versus non. Anyway, there are farmers that, farmers' wives and their kids did this because they were done, some of them before the Civil War, a lot.
Try to plant anything around here, you're going to find rocks, you're going to have to put them somewhere. You're going to find yourself stacking them up and then getting bored and saying, well, might as well make a.
I was asked to do this because I kept finding, I live down near where Ted lives, along the river, and I have rocky outcrop like 10, 15 feet on the property. It's huge grade changes. And so whenever you start digging, it's like, rock, rock, rocks, let's start bordering things. People are like, it looks nice. I was trying to fit in to the character of the community. So at any rate, have we given you enough information to go on for the next?
Yeah, the only thing, or one question I had was delineating the open space. If we did, of what sort do we need? Do we need, you know, monumentation signage or?
Yep.
A stone wall?
You can propose what you want, but we definitely want a clear meets and bounds description.
Okay.
We do like to have monuments, and we have some examples on the small subdivision, if you want to.
That's exactly right.
Of a monument that says, you know, conservation area, so that it's clear in the future.
It provides educational purposes as well.
The, the monument would be towards the, like, if you look there where, where the property chokes down, it's all lined with rock walls.
I thought I was going to get it.
Section, so if you put a monument at the entrance of that.
I mean, you can propose where you think it's appropriate. It's not, it's not like a backyard building lot where we want to be very clear where the delineation is so people don't encroach, but, you know, propose it and then we'll review it and decide if it's sufficient.
I mean, it kind of looks like if you take that whole area and make it, but that might be much more than 30% of the whole site, that's what I'm trying to say.
No, I think it was like 29.4.
Oh, so you just take a little inch from the, on the other, yeah, okay. Well, that'll make it very easy then, you're going to have a very clear delineation where it is.
Right.
Okay. Then, yeah.
And that was excluding the wetlands, it was 29.4?
It, it was, yeah, yep.
So do you want another offline meeting before they come back, Ted? Just to make sure they have everything lined up in a row?
But, I hope that's fine.
Well, rather than have them come back up here, just to make sure that we've gone through all the points. So what you do is when you have your calculations and density, et cetera, before you're ready to resubmit, just contact Ms. Whitman, our secretary, and we'll set the meetings. One of, it'll be me or someone else from the planning board, I'll have Ted. And Bonnie, if we have any comments from you in advance?
It's pretty simple.
I was going to say, it is pretty simple. So, and then if you want to, we can also discuss, as I said, offline, your options about the principal versus accessory structures.
Okay.
I just want to make sure too that you understand the zoning table that's being requested. So it's an existing structure, but we need to make sure that you're not creating nonconformities as to setback and frontage and density. So it's just taking what the requirements are and showing what it is now and how it will stay, you know, what it will be after this line is drawn.
Okay.
Proposed, lot one. And the lots also need to be labeled.
Right.
Okay.
So that we can just, and if it's an existing condition, you know, put an asterisk that says existing condition. So we can just look at it and determine that everything meets the code. And then, is the well shown here too?
The septic was on there. John, do you have any idea where the well is for the house?
I didn't see the well.
Yeah.
Buried. The well is right next to the house. It's on, I think you put it on there.
Oh, it is?
I thought it was shown.
I don't know.
And then the septic is...
It's always separate.
Yeah, approximate. Yeah, he put that on there, approximate. We just want, we just want to make sure that, you know, the new lot lines aren't going to cut off a well or a septic.
Yeah, I had a pro septic, didn't a brand new septic exist?
Yeah. The well might not show up on what we had sent. Oh, we're all bad. It's right by the house.
We'll add it. We'll add it. It's right here, right?
Yeah.
We'll add that.
Might be on that other plan.
And believe it or not, we do have properties where the septic or the well is off. Because it was subdivided again, no one paid attention to where those things were, and that causes problems when it's resold, because usually when that first happened, it was, "Oh, I'm subdividing, giving it to my grand, my father, my mother, my son, my daughter." Okay, no problem. Then one gets sold, and it's like, "Wait, you're turning up my septic to put in your pool?" Not a good thing, I promise you. At any rate, if you have any questions, feel free to call and ask.
Okay.
Any comments from the board?
No.
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 Okay. Then we'll see, as soon as, as soon as you have another application, like I said, just give us a chance to take a look over, to give it an eyeball. It'll make it faster when we get back up here, is what I'm trying to say.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks for your time.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Other business. In at Bellfield. Come on up, Mr. Boy, Mr. Boudreau. So, the applicants are, would like to amend the site plan just for this phase. Subphase 1A. I'm forgetting now, it's been so long.
Subphase 1A.
Okay, subphase 1A. This would be to install a pavilion on the north side of the buildings. There's already a patio, if you recall, there, and a gazebo. There's already doors that exit from the, I guess I'll say, event space inside where you could dine, have a conference, whatever. So, this would be, Larry first discussed this sort of with us as like a tent, and then it became something actually more permanent. And if you had a chance to look at the elevations, I think the canopy looks really nice, or the perilla looks really nice with the building itself. And my question, of course, was when I looked at your lighting plans, there's some really, really strong foot candles. There's 23.5, 25, 35.1, 39.4, 34.8. We're doing some making to confess, "I killed somebody underneath that canopy in the police at night."
I feel the pain.
No, no. So, I kind of usurped you. Let me go ahead and let you guys start. Do you have anything you want to add to what I said?
It's pretty good. What I wanted to show you, just so the board is clear on where we're at here. How do I zoom in here? I have transition lens too, so I got to figure it out here. Is there a zoom thing?
Top.
Top, center.
Oh.
Yep.
Over left.
Oh, there it is. Okay, got it.
There it is.
All right. Okay.
I love it. Is there a zoom thing? I would have said the same thing.
All right. So, this exists here, so I outlined this to show the existing condition. This is an existing survey that Passaro took and then added on the concrete deck, which goes out to the wall, which is, which is right, right here. And so, that red shaded portion is the addition of the concrete deck. North side of the hotel. Okay. Gazebo is, is right here. What we're showing on this, because Tad brought it to our attention, that there, there's some, some speakers out there. There's four of them. So, we're identifying them on this plan, and we're showing them here. It's in the application. The type is and what they are, and Bill can get into the details of it if you want. Okay. All right. I'll zoom back out here. So, this is what was submitted in the application. This is eight-foot spacing here. The structural engineer said you can go to 10 if you want, based on his analysis. So, we're providing an elevation that shows 10. So, it frees it up a little bit better. So, that's 10. 10-foot spacing, that's eight-foot spacing. What it does, it eliminates a total of six columns. So, two on each side and then one at each end. Opens it up, makes it look better. Here's the, the look, the elevation on the north side. I do understand that, that we have to, Cynthia's telling me, you got to have a photometric. Moxie is the rep for the, for the project, and I asked him to, to do the photometric on it, and I can get into these details here. But I told him what the use was, and so he ran the photometrics. I get it. I just got it. I saw that it was intense, obviously. What I was looking at was, because up underneath the canopy, what I was looking at was what was doing outside of it. And it goes down pretty quick. I told him there are two lights, there are two lights out here. I wanted him to, to photo, you know, do the photometric with them, including. He will do that. I won't be able to get that till, till next week. This can, you know, this is, I told him what the use was. I, Bill and I are looking on our phone, we're saying, "Okay, what should this come at, you know, for the outside use?" And we'll, we'll do what you want.
It's looked like Las Vegas from afar underneath this thing. And who wants to sit underneath this when you're at a party or at a wedding when it's 40-foot candles? Do you know how bright that is?
It's an average of 24, is what, how it all works out.
24 is way too high, high as well.
So, we're looking at like a foot candle...
Can I use the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. We're looking at like foot candles like we're sitting in right now. Is that, that stat to me would be acceptable for any kind of event that we'd have.
I don't know if foot candles we're sitting underneath right now.
We're thinking it's about 10 to 15 in, just in general terms.
Yes, Tad.
Several years ago, I had a light feeder in my hand to try to figure out, hand me in light, and in this room with these lights, it was not directly under the blood, it was kind of in between. It registered zero.
I mean, you envision this for parties and banquets, not for reading and...
Correct. This is a...
Mood lighting.
The, the main purpose of the whole idea would be is for weddings. And so, this would be the reception area for the weddings. So, it would be, we want it to have on dimmers so we can really lower it down. But when, if you're having an eating event, you want to have a little bit of light. But 24 probably is way too high. We totally agree.
Plus, we can take half, I was telling Bill, we should take half those lights out, run it again, just, you know, just see what it'll look like. Even a third down to the third.
Every other one?
See what it'll look like.
Yep. Dimmability isn't always as easy with LEDs. You know that, right? And do, I don't believe we have anything on the Kelvin color, Kelvin values here, do we?
We do. It's 35.
Wait, you mean 3500?
35K.
So, that'd be 3500.
Yeah, yeah.
35,000 is 35K.
So, that's cool.
No, no, the Kelvin. So, that, isn't that, don't we try to go for, Bonnie, is it 25?
Kelvin is the temperature. That's the...
Try to go for the warm or the cool.
The color of it.
Right.
The blue or the red.
Generally, we try to get 3,000, right?
Less than 3,000.
I was saying, we try to keep it below 3,000.
But we want it, but we don't want it to be different though than what the Kelvin is in the site.
Do you mean the harsh white light in the front?
Okay, maybe.
Sorry.
The lighting was higher than...
It is?
So, I mean, ultimately, we're guided by the zoning, and the zoning refers to the Greenway Guide, and the Greenway Guide says should be around 5. Should, though, I think is the wording.
Average.
Yeah. So, that's the Greenway Guide, which is in the zoning. So, I just think you need to get to a point where it's reasonable for the events you want.
The average should be 2 on a site.
Okay.
That's the average. No, one should be more than 5. That's what the Greenway Guide says. The average should be 2. 5 should be, now, the average would cover the entire parcel for this, please note. That includes canopy lights or parking lights, et cetera. So, that would be the average for the whole site.
Right. And the 8, 800s are 10, just for frame of reference.
Right. The ATM ones that, like it, is that, what is, is that Chase Bank? That's on Route 9? That when I drive by, I go like this?
Yeah.
That's a 10. That should tell you how harsh 24 really would be.
Agreed. Yeah, I, absolutely right.
Because I don't think this is 10. It could be.
Typical offices, I think, are anywhere from 15 to 20, like an office setting, inside an office. So, you know, if you use that gauge, maybe you're, or a little, about 10 or less in here.
Do you mean back in the days when it was fluorescent lighting that you're talking about is 10 to 15? Because, because those really aren't made anymore, are they?
No.
That's what, I mean, that's, part of that is why you, why OSHA requires you to have windows, because if you sit under 15 foot candles all day long, you're going to go crazy. Can you see about adjusting these somewhat to get to a lower level, to a lower average? Well, you will.
Is that a, that's not a flat ceiling. It's, it's up in the raptors, right? So, they're angled, right? Okay. Now, are you doing any kind of crown on the inside, where you could spill lighting up?
A crown?
Yeah, like a crown, like a trim on the inside.
Inside the light?
No, inside the roof.
Lighting the perimeter.
It'd be like a lighting cove around it.
Yeah, you could do light cove that spills up, which will also cast light too. So, you could limit some of those lights and then have that spill light come back down, and it could create a nice mood.
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't designed it yet. So, our first step was just trying to make sure that this is the direction that everybody would like to see out there. And then our next step is to get with the architect and start working some details, and then figure out what our lighting level really needs to be. But no, we, I know exactly what you're saying. That, that makes a lot of sense.
A lot of times when events like this are held, the musicians or whoever's hosting the party wants to bring in additional lighting. But this is outside, so I don't know. It's something else to think about. Any limitations you want to put on that? I'm sure you don't want to put any, but just something to think about.
Yeah, okay.
So, you've heard us on the lighting, and I don't want to belabor this. The other issue is, it's been brought up before. If you can go back up to where the actual elevation is?
Sit back that way. Yeah, okay. Well, let me just get there. You want this one or...
Other one. So, that's an open area, and it's, it goes right very close to where the roadway is.
Yes.
So, there was concern expressed by some planning board members about if you're a tipsy wedding guest, or if you're a child at a wedding wanting to run around, that it would be very easy for you just to pop right into, and this isn't a road. It's not a high-speed road either. It's just an access path. But with hotels, particularly with guests who are coming in for the first time, they're still trying to wave find and, you know, "Where do I go now? They may not be paying attention." So, do you, I mean, this will be on you, but as long as we discuss it, that is there a way, are you interested in trying to provide some sort of barrier there? A low wall or something? I suggested planter boxes too. You just something that would...
Yeah.
Pardon me? Bollards?
Rail.
Decorative.
We're looking at rail. We got like three different examples.
It would go on, on top of the wall.
Well, let me ask, let me, actually, now that...
Do you have a visual of, of what you're looking at?
So, if you're going, I assume that there would be alcohol, right, allowed outside?
Right. Yeah, it's part of the...
So, I think that's part of your, you know, state alcohol permit, that if it's outside, you've got to be, you've got to be, you've got to be fenced in, right?
That's true.
Yep.
I forgot about that.
That's true. It's part of our, our license. Right now, this way it's set up right now with our license, this patio is in the actual license itself, but we never got any restrictions coming back to us saying that this has to be fenced in or limited access.
I wouldn't know myself. We don't do it, we don't deal with liquor codes.
Yeah.
I just, I've, I've had a couple site plans where I've represented restaurants, and they had outdoor seating.
Right. Gabby's and El Wacamole.
And I think, and I think that Capola's, Capola's had it too when they came in. I don't...
Because they serve alcohol, no, because they serve alcohol. That's, it's delineation of where you can continue to serve.
Corral them in.
Okay.
So, do you look at the options when we got here?
Well, this is the...
We're not going to propose anything, yeah.
This is the preferred that, that I like to see. We look at, and we've got a couple other, we can go through like a horizontal rail or pipe rail, which is, I don't think it goes very well with our architecture.
No, I agree with you.
The first one.
I vote for the first one.
First one is more...
Unfortunately, the first one looks like it might have a higher cost associated with it.
This one here? Yeah, but it has a better design element.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I agree.
You're already spending money. I think that this isn't a tent anymore. This is a nice attractive addition to the building.
Yeah, with the money that we spent on this facility, we wouldn't want to do a pipe rail, that's for sure.
So, so, we were, we're prepared, I believe, to refer this to county planning tonight, but should we wait till there's a barrier?
I would like to see.
Well, no, we, none of us have seen this yet. So, do you want to send, how it took us to handle this thing to county planning, because we know you're in a rush?
Maybe subject to...
Right, subject to, refer it, subject to getting, you know, the railing and stuff to...
Corner is secure.
Okay.
I'm going to run the...
What?
I'm going to run the...
Oh, we're going to need the photometrics anyway.
I'm going to run them tomorrow.
So, how do we need to amend the language here?
So, let's see. It says, "Direct its secretary to refer the amended project to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to 239M of general law, comma, as soon..."
Wait, we can't, you're going too fast. We can't hear you.
Oh, I was, the first part, leave number one, and then add a comma at the end, "As soon as revised photometric plan..."
Secure perimeter.
"...railing details." Are you updating the whole plan?
I'll, I'll update the whole plan.
Okay, "As soon as revised site plan is received," which includes photometric plan and railing details.
Yeah.
You can have her read it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
Well, "As soon as revised site plan is received..."
Revised site plan or is, I said, was received?
"...photometric and..." Plan, yeah.
And... And fence detail.
Railing.
Rail.
Railing.
Okay. What I have is, "As soon as revised site plans are received with photometric plans and railing detail."
Which includes?
Which includes.
Includes.
Where's the "which includes"?
The revised site plan.
Which includes?
"As soon as revised site plan is received," which includes photometric and railing detail.
Okay. As soon as revised. That's all right. Site plans already say, "Every which includes photometric." Here you go. Are you reading, Rob?
Don, it's...
It's Don.
You got it?
No.
Oh, Don. Oh, Don has it.
He's going to take Victoria's. Okay.
Okay, good. That's okay. It's good to have it. That's fine. It's good to have it.
Yep, okay.
Are you ready?
Good.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Any other comments from consultants or the board?
You captured them.
I guess my only concern is that if, you know, this is, this is, we're trying to move this through quickly, but I would appreciate if you did consider, like this, if it's an event space, look at it as an event space instead of like a barn or a pickleball court. So, put some design elements in there that work for an event space. Because the only other thing I'm thinking of is that I can see that people would be using the stringed lights, right? That's all the rage now. You put the, you know, hang those out to put, that's all going to impact this. So, I would just appreciate that you look at it with an eye towards, okay, the first person to have a wedding here is going to do what? Oh, they're going to string lights all over the place. They're going to have a band over here with, with psychedelic things all going.
That's what Stephanie was saying. You're right.
And so, I would appreciate it if it was treated as a pure event space that takes this into account, because we can't have you, you know, just throw something together because you're in a hurry. That's, that's all. I just, and it will work out for you better.
From our operations, individuals that are responsible for the events and everything, they totally agree with what you just said. They would, they would never allow string lights. This is why we're trying to get a permanent structure together. In fact, some of the ceiling, reflective ceiling plan, we're looking at using some of the sycamore that we have up in those, those coffer areas.
Or other wood. Pardon me? Or other wood.
Or other wood.
I think we're running out of sycamore.
Well, certain areas will have sycamore. The other areas would have painted woodwork. But no, I totally agree with you. And that's, you're right on, and because we were saying that if someone's going to spend the money that they're going to have to spend here, they're not going to want something that's just looks like a tent. So, this is where all this kind of generated from, is that it makes more sense to do something more permanent that makes sense.
And it doesn't have to be fancy. I mean, it looks very classy and very classic. It's just when we started talking about the lights, so...
Agreed. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, it's raining.
We were trying, I know, we were trying to figure out what that, what that was.
Sunny Claus is coming back again, the deer hopes.
I thought someone was tapping.
Yeah. Really big raindrops.
Okay, so, any other comments from the board?
I have one question.
I'm just going to go ahead and make a comment then again. Parking is an issue for the long term, we'll solve that one, but the more you're creating bigger and bigger event spaces, we already know it's happening when you have events right now for just little teeny things like the Ryan Beck Fire Department. So just remember, consider this. Anybody else? Everybody with a resolution?
Okay. Resolution to reaffirm seeker and refer to county planning. The N F L Field Site Plan Amendment, Exterior Modification Pavilion, March 6, 2024, Resolution 2017-04Q, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, number one, directs the secretary to refer to the amended project at the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239M of the municipal law, and as soon as the revised site plan is received, which includes photometric plan and railing details.
Yay!
Number two, directs the secretary to refer the amended site project to the Roosevelt Fire District. Number three, affirms its prior negative declaration issued on January 3, 2018.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's taken care of. Now, we need a motion to set a public hearing, but if you're going to revise the plans, do you want us to try, start this on March 20? Public hearing? We have to have it like a week beforehand, so we can post it up on the...
Yeah, the plan should be done latest Monday.
Okay. Make a motion to set a public hearing for March 20.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You gotta get in fast with those seat down there.
These guys are like, I think they count in the seconds.
Thank you. This is going to look nice when it's done, I know. Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver. This is for the addition of a heat pump. This is in a area of, scenic area statewide significance, yes. And we have a recommendation for, from the zoning administrator for a site waiver. It's the mini split heat pump, it's on Mulford Avenue in Statsburg. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No.
I believe Ms. Dexter has this resolution?
Yes. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Kelly Gallagher, Matthew Langston, Site Plan Waiver, Resolution Number 2024-09. Whereas request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Matthew Langston and Kelly Gallagher, for installation of one ductless mini split heat pump system on the property associated with a single-family home, requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, February 1, 2024, and per the request to the Planning Board dated February 29, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions, carries? Next item on the agenda is a sign permit. This is, from 9G, it's 1582. This actually is just a change of ownership, it's still storage, it was StoreQuest, which I feel like we just did that one not too long ago.
Yeah.
And this is CubeSmart, at Ms. Moss's recommendation letter, notes that it is code compliant everywhere. I tell you that, the colored picture, that red glowed so much, I thought at first it was entirely lit.
Yeah.
Because it just, it was color saturated the way they got, I don't know how they got it to be looking that like. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Gercio, this one's yours.
Sure. Resolution, recommendation for issuance of a sign permit pursuant to town code Section 108-24, Period 3A. CubeSmart self-storage, date March 6, 2024, Resolution 2024-08. Whereas, 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 be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the zoning minister issue the sign permit for CubeSmart self-storage, as submitted by Next Gen Signs on February 22, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Verizon Wireless Tower, this is the one we just approved. And I think we're in the last items of conditions to be satisfied, was that the town has required an undertaking so that there would be some kind of performance security in the event that it would need to be taken down after not being used for a year. We got the recommendation from Mr. Sotero, but we need to refer this over to the town board, hence the resolution. Anybody have any questions? Vice Chair Oliver, this is yours.
Resolution to recommend amount of performance guarantee, Verizon Cell Tower, St. Andrews, Resolution Number 2022-52B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the town board accept the performance guarantee for the removal of the tower in the amount of $140,000 in form, substance, and manner of execution acceptable to the town board and its attorney.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously again. Next item on the agenda is carriage, let's start calling it Crofton Muse again, it really is Crofton Muse. And Ms. Padaro, I was pleased to note that Mr., is it Ariel, Ariely?
He says Ariel.
Ariel. Agreed with your request for, very quickly, he said agree with Victoria.
That's good, because I...
It's textbook law.
I'm not fighting.
No, no, it's textbook law. At any rate, so...
The board doesn't know what you're talking about. Yeah.
It's fine.
Oh, sorry, you're right. That application, in order for, for me to sign it, it has to be signed by the owner, and because it's a corporation, we need an authorization by the corporation to whoever's going to actually sign it.
They were, they were hoping to have just their engineer sign the site plan, but we need a corporate resolution, which is standard.
The next item is Crofton Muse. This is the application, discussing and discussing, we finally just concluded, updated secret review, thanks to Bonnie's lengthy work on it, as well as the other consultants, I'll say right here. But we discovered that their special use permit, even though we've been extending the application's approval, it expired long ago. So we now have a new application for site plan, for special use permit, and we need to set the public hearing. We can set this, we set this for March 20th, oops. Then we also will have the same, it will be simultaneous with the public hearing on the site plan. So I'm making a motion to, to the public hearing for March 20, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Ah!
I am.
Who wants the second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion for the board.
Okay.
I think we all agree that the entrance, the variances are looking fine for most of them. I, Don and I worked together on the letter that went out, it was recommending, but then I heard people say, no, I don't want to recommend a 17 percent. So I prepared two letters, basically. One is an approval, one suggesting that they approve all, the other is a partial denial, saying that we don't think that the height on the pillars and the, where the walls are adjacent, start out, before they go down, are correct. So let me just, let me start from the internal left. Stephanie?
Because I was one of the people that jumped right back at you.
No, I was just, I'm not going to outside most.
Well, if we're, yeah, I actually think that because of the bucolic setting where it is in Statsburg, versus, you know, people comment, they want, maybe they want their wall to reflect like Marist or like the CIA, which is actually a much more developed intersection and area, borders Poughkeepsie. You know, a more developed area of Hyde Park. And I just think this is just a lovely bucolic part of Statsburg, and I like the stone wall as it is. Doesn't mean I make them keep, you know, I want to protect the historic nature of the stone wall. But I think the scale of it is just really, I actually don't think Anderson is doing itself a favor by putting up this kind of a structure in this setting. So I, I would like to deny the height.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
I, I agree. In looking at it, when I started looking at it, the CIA, Vanderbilts, they all seem to have structures around them that are visible. This, this particular entrance is open to the...
Nature.
Nature, yeah, there's tree backdrop, there's a little bit of an incline, rolling hill, and all that is going to be lost. So that's, you know, and it's going to be obscured by this. The other thing is those other areas that, of those, those entries are highly trafficked. They're, they're much more trafficked. So, so it becomes a security issue. So you pull in the gate, you know, it's a turnaround. So it actually is a safety feature. In this case, there isn't that. And, and that's, that's the only thing. And then I'm worried about, like, does now that beautiful tree out there get obscured by this big...
Massive.
Massive structure that really is, just stands alone in a field. It's just, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of weird. So I, I agree with Stephanie on that, and I would go for the refusal of the 17-foot height.
Mr. Veith?
I like the 17-foot height because of the walkway through. I think if you brought it down, it looks a little funny. I think it's set back enough that the 17-foot height would look great.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I drive by that every morning. To me, there's a progression of stone walls as I drive. I see Anderson Center, I see, I can't remember the name of, it's next to Ledgewood, but there's a beautiful stone wall with the, with the top stones all vertical.
Next, oh, oh, the entrance, you mean the entrance?
Next to Ledgewood.
Scenic?
Next to, next to Ledgewood, across from the, what's her name? Richard, Richard Marks and Maddie.
Oh, the, the pink barn, with the stone walls there in the entrance, right.
Very beautiful stone walls.
Maddie Marks, Maddie Marks.
Yep, and then there's Shagaback, which is another one, which is very similar to Anderson. It's, it has that, what they've done is they built the pillars, and then they put a walking gate, entryway, and then there's more. And then the next one I see is the back exit of Vanderbilt. And then I start coming into the bigger stuff, and, and the big gates at Vanderbilt, there's a huge gatehouse right there. So someone said that, you know, there, it's, if you can't tie a large entranceway to something large, and it might not look well, but to me, it looks out of character. And just in general, the more of the Hyde Park stone walls that get taken out to get replaced with the modern-looking, I don't know, kind of Gaudi-looking, it, to me, it loses, it loses Hyde Park's sense of place. So I would vote in favor of denying that portion of the referral.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
So I am okay with the 17 feet in height, mainly because of the speed on Route 9 in that area, cars are traveling very fast. I think the speed limit's 55, and they're probably doing 60, 65. So a substantial entrance is understandable, and I'll echo Don's comment regarding the, the way they're adding the pedestrian access that way. I, I don't mind it.
It's a divided board thus far.
So far.
Mr. Gercio?
I mean, I can see both.
Oh, come on, John, come on, you can't do that.
No, but I honestly can, but...
Man up now, come on.
John, John.
John, very John, very John.
No, but I can see both views, but the reality, I think that the setback is far enough back where the 17 is fine. And, and I echo Don's view a little bit. It's, I mean, I grew up here in Hyde Park, I think where it's located, I, and the speed